Pine Bluff City Council Meeting of May the 6th, 2013 is hereby called to order. May we have roll call, please?
I'm Alderman.
Here.
I'm Easton.
I'm Stapp.
Here.
I'm Walker.
I'm Boyd.
Here.
I'm Brown.
Here.
I'm Mace.
Here.
I'm Ollie.
Thank you.
Each of you have, each one has been given a copy of the minutes for April the 15th, 2013. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
It's all moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second that the minutes of April the 15th be approved. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, Alderman Brummett, ordinances and resolutions.
Yes ma'am, the ordinance resolutions committee met prior to the meeting. Items one and two will be read for the third and final time tonight. Items three and four will be up for the second reading. Item five will be up for the first reading. Item six for the first reading. It will be, it will be up for the first reading. Item seven will be completed tonight. Item eight will be read one time and referred to the Development Planning Committee. So will item nine and 10. The rest of resolutions, 11 through 15, and they will be approved tonight.
Did you say number seven will be completed tonight?
Yes ma'am, that's what the recommendation is from ordinance resolutions committee.
Do we vote on it?
The committee recommended that. Then we will, when it comes up, you can either vote to or not. Yes ma'am.
Excuse me. I'm baffled by it being such an emergency.
The committee was asked-
I'm just baffled, why would it be an emergency?
So we can move forward with the Parks and Recreation Commission and get the new members that you all, we all voted to put in place.
Well, actually, some of these names I don't know anything about and I think that we should have had time to, you know, kind of cipher these names, really. So I don't think it should be an emergency, I think we need time to cipher these names.
That's the recommendation for ordinance resolutions. When it comes around, you can vote your comments.
I don't see the emergency, I just think that we need time to cipher their names.
Okay, that's fine. That concludes ordinance resolutions committee report.
Thank you sir. Ways and Means, Alderman Brummett.
Ways and Means, we have a budget adjustment in your packet. It's concerning the collaborative effort between the city of Pine Bluff and Pine Bluff High School for a summer program, enrichment program. As you see, we're gonna just serve as the agent and we've already had a resident piece of legislation to authorizing this to take place. There's a total of $32,330.30 of contributions. And you see the way the money will be spent, no, no money from the city is involved, these are all donations. I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that the budget adjustment for the summer academic and cultural enrichment program in the amount of $32,330 be voted on. Any questions or discussions about the program? Hearing done, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The committee also reviewed ordinance number six and gave it a do-pass recommendation to the council. I'd like to remind everybody that tomorrow at, no, yeah, tomorrow, at 2:00 PM, the Ways and Means Committee will meet. As you recall, we had a session where we asked the mayor to ask department heads to review their budgets and these are the, they will present their recommendations to the Ways and Means Committee meeting tomorrow at 2:00. The mayor has requested a 2.5% reduction in departments on a voluntary basis and we will look at those at 2:00 tomorrow. I would encourage everybody to please be there if you possibly can. That concludes Ways and Means. Move we pay the bills that the city owes?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that the bills of the city be paid, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you sir. Economic and Community Development, Alderwoman Walker.
I do not have any report, but I would like to use my time for Dr. Nellis to speak. An assembly, board assembly that was given last Thursday and in case somebody happened to leave because it was such great things going on in that gymnasium on Thursday in reference to, to the young people of this city. And it was not one reporter there to report it. But, you know, there's always bad things that is reported, or allegedly bad things, you know, that our children are doing so bad. But when you read the paper, the majority of the serious crime is not done by children, they're done by adults. Now, those are the people that you see in the paper. And they receive a lot of scholarship, very impressive, and I wanted him to be able to tell us that. Dr. Nellis.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Councilwoman Walker was there and she, I guess, decided that it would be an opportunity to share some good news about some very positive things that your children from this city are accomplishing at Pine Bluff High School. And so, she called me and asked would I come by and have a few words here at the council meeting. And I asked her specifically, I said, "What would you like for me to say?" And she said, "I just want you to share the good news." And so I want you, as a community, to know that you have a lot to be proud of with some of your students at Pine Bluff High School. More than 40 have received scholarship opportunities totaling over a million dollars. And we are engaging in programs such as our ACT prep to assist our students with developing higher ACT scores so they'll be able to get into the colleges of their choices and in turn, receive more scholarship monies. We are using a program called Grad Point to increase our graduation rate and we're doing some Saturday remediation opportunities so that our children will graduate on time. But for those who are graduating on time, we had approximately 40 who received a million, 1.1 million dollars in scholarship opportunities. And many of you know these children, I have seen them around your communities for years. And we had one young man in particular, and I don't know if Cameron is here with his family, is Cameron Haney here? Cameron's not here with his family, but Cameron received a scholarship titled the Gates Millennium Scholar. That was funded by a $1.6 billion endowment by Bill and Melinda Gates. Each year, over 54,000 children apply for that scholarship and only 1,000 are selected. And this focuses on leadership. And Cameron, to the best of my knowledge, is the one from this area that received that scholarship. It's a scholarship that has a value of $250,000. That means, that's right, that's a quarter of a million dollars. Cameron can go to school anywhere he wants to in these United States of America. He's been accepted into the University of Arkansas and I think Louisiana State University. And Cameron wants to pursue and receive a doctoral degree. This scholarship will pay for a terminal degree. I wish I had some of that Bill Gates money paying for mine. But you have, although I know that there are some issues, some social issues, that you as a city must tackle and we as a city, school, collaborative partner must address, you have lots of children at Pine Bluff High School doing really good things and you have a lot to be proud of. And so Ms. Walker, thank you for this opportunity and we continue to appreciate your support at Pine Bluff High School.
Would you be willing to tell them that he had opportunity to go to Harvard?
Yes, well, he's, he's been accepted into several schools and I think Harvard was one of them. And he, I don't know what Cameron's future plans are yet, I think he's still kind of undecided. You know, you wake up one day and you've got X amount of money to go to a school of your choice and then you wake up the next day and someone says, "Here's a quarter of a million." Think about it some more. So I think he's exploring his option that he's born.
Can I ask you this? The, could you speak a little bit about the turnaround program? That, the turnaround program from West Virginia that the school system is looking at being a participant of, or?
I'll tell you what, I think you were at that luncheon.
Yes, sir.
Were you at that luncheon?
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
I wasn't at that luncheon.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to-
Okay, well, I, no, I'm not aware, I think-
Okay.
I think one of many programs that the district is exploring-
Okay.
Is, is this turnaround program. And all of, I don't say this to diminish, you know, what one particular program does versus the other, but all of them have a turnaround component when you have a struggling academic program. And of course, you're, this is not foreign news to you, Pine Bluff High School has been struggling with ACT scores, graduation rates, and any number of other issues for several years. And the district as a whole has been classified as academically distressed. So I think the district is exploring some options and that's one of them. I can't speak to it because I simply didn't attend that program. Anything else? Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes Economic and Community Development. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Holcomb.
No report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alderman Mace.
Yes ma'am, we had a, Public Works had a meeting on the 29th and we discussed 12, 13, and 14 on the agenda items. And issue, I had an issue with 12 at first and I talked with the city attorney and the administration, resolution ordinance committee and we decided to move on with it. But Mr. Matthew will answer any questions pertaining to those. And Ms. Maddie Collins, I'm gonna allow her some of my time as well, she's, can't be out too late. She called the mayor's office today and she's highly respected in the community as an educator and she wanted to speak about the Carrera Scott King Center. I've been trying to fight to keep it open and she's been in the fight with me. I gave you all, some of, most of your observation of that, senior citizen building in MLK Park, Ms. Maddie Collins.
Good evening to each of you, to our mayor and our council. I tell you, I've grown older since I was here the last time.
We all have.
The last time I spoke before the council, it was for building, the new building at Mother Luther King Park. They built it, we had, we were blessed. There were some older ladies paying with me. We had two options, one person wanted to build it downtown and those who attended the center wanted it built where it is, where they could see the lake, fish if they wanted to, or do anything, walk. And, and it was just, it's a beautiful place. And I just heard, and I've turned 81 and I don't need to be becoming upset too often. I'm glad to be here. But I appreciate your giving me this opportunity and I want to thank Alderman Mace for relinquishing his time for to allow me to say a few words. I just want to know for myself from you, I was told Thursday and I went to the center and I asked the ladies who were there what was going on and they told me. And I just couldn't believe it, they were sad, of course. I was sad too because I went through a lot of talking and going on to try to get it built. It is looking and I said, "One of these days, I'd probably go out there," but I'm still able to get around a little and drive, so I'm trying to support them. Some of them said they would be here today, but they gave me a list of names and it was a few of them out there and it's not a long list, I think about 15 and 20, about 15 of them were there that day. And I said, "Do you want to leave?" And they said, "No, I really don't want to leave from out here." They were looking so sad, it made me sad and I don't like to be sad, I'm not a sad person. So I told them, they said Friday was their last day. Monday, today, they were supposed to have met down at 8th Street. And I just want to ask you, if I were given the opportunity and you were given the opportunity to select a place to sit and relax and just do whatever you could do, would you select the building on 8th Street or would you select the one out there in Mother Luther King Park? Because it's new and you can watch the birds and watch the ducks go up to the window and you can fish and do things. And that's why they built it in the first place, because I brought some old ladies, they're sleeping now, so I'm here for them. I brought some old ladies to speak to the board and the board said, "We're not going downtown, we're going to build it where you want it." And my question is, and I want to reason with you, I believe in doing things that would plead the Lord. And I just can't see, when you disturb old folk and young people, it depresses them more than anything else, anyone else. And to see their faces Friday when I left was very difficult for me. And I told them that I would come, I would call, the board was almost to see if you could, I could say a few words and maybe you could change and I was told that there's not enough money to sustain it. Is that not true? What happened to the money? They built it, it does belong to the city, is that right? Can anybody answer that? They said it costs so much, is it really, does it really cost a lot?
Is it operated through care and age on age?
Yes, Ms. Bradshaw, Ms. Bradshaw's group is over there. Ms. Bradshaw didn't want it in the first place, she wanted it built downtown. And I brought those old ladies in here and talked to the people and they said, "No, Billy Waddles, where they want it." So they did. She wasn't even there today, they opened it, I was there, she never showed up. And a few months or year, or in a year, I assume, she opened one down on 8th Street. Where the, and finally, you had two in this town. So I'm just here to reason with you. If you had an opportunity to attend one of them, which one would you choose? I would select one where I can sit and watch the ducks and the water flow and I can go out and walk and do things, other than the one downtown where all you can see is cars, cement, and whatever. So I just came to reason with you. Do whatever you please, but I just want to put this on your heart, to try to do the right thing. If it can, if it's closed, I don't know. They told me Friday would be the last day. I didn't, I didn't make it over there, but I'm going tomorrow on 8th Street to comfort those people who had to go over there because it's closed out there. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, it wasn't in the paper, I didn't see it. So I don't know what's going on, but all I know is that I've lived long enough to realize that right will always win. It takes the time, but it will win. I just wanted to put it on your heart to see what could be done and God bless you and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
I wanted to say that if it's operated by Ms. Bradshaw, of course, we, we can't make her stay, but we can explore the options of someone else running the center and then they will have an option. So that may be something we can look at.
I hope that if you will look at it, I hope you will.
Right now, the commission has put in a paper for other entities to, to kind of use a proposal as to what they would like to do with the center and those are due in your office by the 17th, April 12th.
When you say, excuse me, when you say other entities, are they similar in fashion as to what she's talking about?
Well, we're asking for proposals and stuff.
Okay.
So it could be, we could, we could, we would love to ask that.
Okay, okay.
I think we donate, allocate, put four or five thousand dollars a year over there, something like that.
The city pays the utilities, several years ago, the Dutch King was mayor, the park missions done a little on the rent because we were paying the utilities for the benefit of the usage of the water. So Matt Cole, he was our chair, he provided there to Dutch King, he provided the city to take over the utilities, so we did go up and rent that town and had our own, own facilities.
So can we keep that money budgeted and let it just sit there and don't use it in case somebody, get somebody with a good program to come in and, you know, the money still is appropriated for that, right?
Yeah. There you go, the board's to come.
I'm sure something the commission will take up.
We send the utilities to the city.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I, I just hope that something can be done and maybe it could be reopened under somebody else's leadership who's really gonna work on it and, because I'm sure you would agree to be down there instead of up here on 8th Street if you had the opportunity. That's all I'm asking for, to be fair and right and do the right thing because it will win eventually. Now, I would leave now when I stop talking because I wanna get home before dark. My house was broken into on the 14th of April while I was at church, Sunday School and what's it?
Sorry.
And I tell you, if anybody had ever told me that would happen in Pine Bluff, I didn't mind, it was good because it was quiet, I never heard anything about it. So I'm not leaving because I'm not interested in what you have to say and other things, but I'm leaving because I, I need to and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you. Does that conclude your report? Alderman Mace?
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd?
The only thing I'd like to share that on May 14th, we will meet at 2:00 PM, we're gonna discuss items that's on the agenda now, item three, eight, and 10. And we, that's the committee to be there, especially item three that we need to bring some closure to.
Okay, thank you, sir. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown?
What report, ma'am?
Thank you, sir. Administration, Alderman Steps?
Yes, ma'am, I have a report, but before I give my report, this is municipal clerk's week and I will ask the municipal clerk and her counterparts to come down, I'm gonna read a proclamation to them. Also, we had a, we had a hearing a couple of weeks ago, administration, we had a parks employee that requested a hearing and the full council, the committee was recommending the full council for a reinstatement of that employee. There was some thing that we thought that, that we could, that we could support and I think that we felt like the time ought to be served at the time that he had been suspended. But we also had a, what was it, three months probationary period that we instituted, told myself, Alderman, Holcomb and Alderman, Easterly, we recommended to the full council that this employee be reinstated. That's the end of my report, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public Safety, Alderman Easterly?
I was tied up, this is Alderman Brown.
Okay.
Okay, we had a report from Sergeant Neal with the police department, a pretty thorough report, hopefully everybody's got a copy of it, that showed the progress being made within the police department on controlling crime. One of the issues that he shared with us was a report on the Safe Team Crime Stats report that shows some significant decreases in the area that has been defined by the Safe Team. I'm sure you can get a copy of this from the police department. Then the fire department gave their monthly report and shared with us the number of, total of 342 emergency calls for the month of April and that was down about 30 compared to the month before. He also reviewed all the training activities that has been involved with, with the fire department that has bringing them up to speed. And one of the exciting things that they reported, it's something that's been worked on for a number of years, is that effective August 1st, 2013, the protection, the public protection classification as rated by the Insurance Services Office, ISO, for the city of Pine Bluff's Fire and Emergency Services Department has been improved and upgraded to a Class II. That's a significant improvement. We've been a Class III for over probably 20 years. And all the new equipment we helped to finance through the council and the help of everybody in the community and it's a collaborative effort, I mean, it's something everybody's worked on, that they have a couple of more steps to run through, but, but they've not, you know, they're very firm and believe- but they've not, uh, you know, they're very firm in believing that this is going to be fine. We also had a report from the district court. One of the things that she was excited about is that they now you can pay your traffic tickets online. Any other fines and so on that are owed to the city. It's www.pinebluffpayments.com. If you can, there'll be a link to it off of our website and literally you can, I think if I'm understood them correctly, you don't even have to necessarily go to court. If you've got a traffic fine and you find, get the amount, you can pay it online. That's excellent. She also reviewed all the activities going on with the district court. Then we had a report from the crime commission. I'm very, very excited with the involvement these people have had and with our city. She mentioned the fact that the purpose of the crime commission was to bring agencies together to determine innovative ideas to help reduce crime. One of the ones that they actually were extremely involved in was redevelopment and revitalization of the Safe Team. They meet weekly and the Safe Team provides the opportunity for different departments working together to stop crime in a particular area. They've identified, uh, Twenty-third to Twenty-eighth on one side and Cherry to Olive Street. That's a boundary line that right now is being considered and that's the one the police department report verified that the impact that they've had already is working. Another thing that the commission is working on is the problem of copper theft. They've been going and visiting with the various scrap metal dealers around town and they're trying to come with a very, a more innovative, if you will, way to help us control the theft of copper. They're very active and they're having meetings on a regular basis with speakers from state and local level coming in and speaking to their group. And I'm just very happy the progress that that commission has made and we thank you very much.
No, can I back up, uh?
That concludes public safety.
I would like to make a motion that we reinstate this employee, but if we have some discussion, we'll need to go into the executive session.
I second your motion.
Okay. The motions were made and seconded that we go into executive session to discuss.
No, 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 no.
No.
Only if you got any questions.
Reinstate.
The, the motion was, was made in the second that we reinstate.
Okay.
But if there is some discussion, we would have to go.
Okay. All right. So.
The only question I have is, is it proper for us to do this for an employee at the parks departments that's around the parks commission?
It was animal control, I believe.
Animal control.
Animal control.
No, I'm sorry. Animal control.
Didn't he say parks?
Man, you ain't got to get no witness.
That's what I thought I heard.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I was having a problem of us being able to do that.
Yeah, animal control.
Animal control.
Right.
Is it somebody that works down within the department or supervisor?
Not, not supervisor. All right. Do I carry the motion? You don't carry it.
I'm not sure what motion's on the table at this point.
Reinstate.
Reinstate.
Do you want to do the motion to reinstate?
Yes.
Okay. Then a motion's been made and seconded that the employee who, uh, do we name the employee? Being reinstated?
No.
Okay.
It's going to be on record. What was his name? Wilbert, uh?
Conway.
Oh, she's going, wait, Miss Conway. Is she in here? She should be in here. Name of the, uh? Wilbert. Wilbert James is his name. Wilbert James.
Okay. So the motion is, and it's been reinstated and it's been seconded, Wilbert James.
With the stated conditions.
The conditions are that the time served would, uh, would serve as any, uh, disciplinary action that was taken and that he would serve on the ninety-day, uh, uh,
Probation A.
Probationary period. There'd be other infractions going in ninety-day period and he would automatically be terminated.
Ninety, ninety-day probation period and?
Starting when?
And the, the time that he was off was with, without pay and that was to serve as if?
Right. Uh, started immediately, just on tomorrow.
Okay. The probation A period. Okay.
Probation A period and the problem.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to reinstate Mr. Wilbert James. One thing I'd like to say regarding public safety, uh, the ISO report and, um, Chief Howe, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, we, um, were listed as fifteen out of one thousand fire departments that got a number, that got a rating of number two. Is that right?
Yes. According to records, there are over a thousand fire departments in the state of Arkansas and only fifteen have a current rating of two. So.
That's wonderful.
We want fifteen throughout the state.
Yeah. That is awesome.
Now, a quick note, there are only two in the state that carry a one and the scale is from one to ten. The lower your number, the better. There are only two throughout the state that have a rating of one. Our largest fire department in the state is Little Rock, quite naturally, and they're currently a two. So we're right there at Little Rock if there's anything.
That's wonderful. Good news. Yes. Thank you, sir. Okay. That concludes our committee reports. Ma'am?
I'm, uh, sorry. I hate to butt in, but I had talked to, uh, Reverend Harold Carroll and there's some veterans here that they wanted to recognize and speak, um, and have a few words. Could they do that, please?
He's, he's on the agenda remarks. He's on the agenda for the last. Uh-huh. He is.
Oh.
Uh-huh. Towards the la- he's on the last. Uh-huh.
Okay. He wasn't sure that they could resolve it.
He is. Yes. Uh-huh. He's on there. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to, um, ordinances and resolutions. Alderman Brummett?
Yes, ma'am. We have an ordinance specifying that an occupant load notice be posted in a room or space used for an assembly prescribing the requirements for the notice and related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance specifying that an occupant load notice be posted in a room or space used for an assembly prescribing the requirements for the notice and related purposes.
Move for adoption.
Second?
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded that an ordinance specifying that an occupant load notice be posted in a room or space used for an assembly prescribing the requirements for the notice and related purposes. Um, this is up for a discussion. Any questions regarding this?
This for, what is this basically? The, the buildings? Just, just clubs, churches or anything?
Any building such as this building here. Chief, would you like to speak to that, please?
Just a little background, if you will. Uh, the fire code is adopted by the city through ordinance and this measure is in the fire code. Uh, the fire code is somewhat generic in its language. This simply gives some direction as to what the sign should look like, uh, the text of the lettering. It's just a guideline and reinforcing what's already there. Oftentimes in the code, they're very general in statement to kind of let the cities have some leeway to customize to fit their area. So this is not totally new, the requirement to have the occupancy load posted and the types of locations that this is prevalent is anywhere of assembly, which will be your restaurants, theaters, anywhere you would have a gathering of people is the main target areas, that are hotels, anything of that nature. A lot of people are already in compliance, but there are those that are not in compliance. So this is just to give that ordinance, uh, that fire code some teeth by ordinance, by city ordinance. And, uh, as an ordinance, we've adopted the entire fire code. It's just within the fire code. It's already there and it's already been adopted, but we're given some specific details through city ordinance to support the fire code and that's basically what this is.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on to a vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance to adopt the continuity of operations plan for city government for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to adopt the continuity of operations plan for the city gov- the city government for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved improperly seconded that an ordinance to adopt the community continuity of operations plans for city government for the city of Pine Bluff, um, is open for discussion? Questions?
Continuity means to keep everything uninterrupted in the case of something happens. Now, are we saying that every department should have a place to relocate individually in this plan of action?
It's an emergency plan so that everything's gone, they could keep everything going at that point without having, I mean, there's a plan in place to keep everything, the government moving in a moment of crisis. It's a whole big thick program, uh.
Yes, sir. Please.
It's not, it's not for public outlays or somebody would know what the, what the contingency plans were or if somebody was to blow anything up. The chief could speak to it if you need any more than that.
I understand the sensitivity of it. I, I read that in there, but I just want to make sure that every department have a place where they can relocate. Explain it, chief.
In this, in an emergency or natural disaster, the desire to have a plan of action where you can continue to have city government function. Whether it be in one place or you may have certain administrative in this building, public safety in a different building, it may not be all under one roof, but there's a plan in place that each entity can continue to operate. And you may have to use more than one physical location to accomplish that goal, but the goal is to have a contingency plan in place. There was a natural disaster that took out this building. The mayor's office would be able to function, police would be able to function, fire would be able to function, the city attorney, the city business could still continue to be done. Now, you may have to use more than one location physically to accomplish that goal, but you have a plan in place so that the city can continue to operate. That, that's that plan, continuing operations plan, we say COOP for short, but that's what it is. And that's what that plan, this was about a year-long process. Some other department heads were involved with putting their plan in place and compiling it all in one place. Uh, some private businesses may refer to as emergency operations plan, but they're very similar. You have a plan in place in a time of an emergency and that's what that's all about. But this was for the city, not just for private industry. Because private industries, they're pretty good about it, but the city hadn't really adopted the plan. So this is what that was for, for city government.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. Okay. Hearing none. Um, all in favor for this ordinance, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance amending sixteen dash one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, provide a penalty for failure to abate a public nuisance and for related purposes up for the second reading.
An ordinance amending sixteen dash one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to provide a penalty for failure to abate a public nuisance and for related purposes.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance amending section two dash two ninety-three and two dash one eighty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas regarding the meetings officers and length of terms of the Pine Bluff Commission on children and youth up for the second reading.
An ordinance amending sections two dash two ninety-three and two dash one eighty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas regarding the meetings officers and length of terms of the Pine Bluff Commission on youth, children and youth.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance addressing residency requirements for the department heads and city employees repealing ordinances numbers fifty-eight sixty-three and six oh two one regarding residency requirements for department heads and uniformed police officers repeating, repealing resolution numbers fifteen seventy and fifteen eighty-two concerning residency of city employees, establishing a new residency rule for department heads and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas it is desired to bring clarity and finality to the question of residency as, as, as it is regards to, I'm sorry, as regards to city department heads and city employees and to establish a uniform requirement for the future. And whereas it is desired to move forward with a clean slate respecting current department heads and employees, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, legislation repealed. Ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-three passed January eighteenth, two thousand and two thousand regarding the residency of department heads and ordinance sixty twenty-one passed June seventeenth, two thousand and two regarding the residency of uniformed officers are hereby repealed. Resolution number fifteen seventy passed February twenty-second, nineteen ninety-four and resolution number fifteen eighty-two passed April eighteenth, nineteen ninety-four, both concerning the residency of city employees are hereby, are each hereby repealed. Section two, residency requirement. A, subject to B and C below, a department head of the city, including the chief of the police department or of the fire department and emergency services departments must establish and maintain a residence within twelve miles of the city limits of Pine Bluff in order to hold the position. B, interim appointees. An interim department head, including a chief of the police department or the fire and emergency services department, serving as, as of the effective date of this ordinance is exempt from the residence requirement of subsection A. For purposes of this subsection, interim means service not to exceed one calendar year in duration in that capacity. An interim department head serving as of the effective date of this ordinance is eligible for permanent appointment. I'm sorry, notwithstanding section, subsection A. An interim department head appointed after the date of this ordinance must establish residency in compliance with subsection A to be eligible for permanent appointment. C, current department heads and employees exempt. The requirements of subsection A do not apply to a department head holding the position and serving as, and serving as of the effective date of this ordinance or to an employee who is employed by the city as of the effective, effective date of this ordinance. Such persons are exempt from the requirements of subsection A throughout the tenure of their employment and shall be eligible for advancement to and hold any, uh, appointive, administrative or supervisory position without regard to the requirements of subsection A. Section three, general repealer. All ordinances, resolution bylaws and other matters in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section four, severability in the event any section, subsection, subdivision, paragraph, subparagraph, item, sentence, clause, phrase or word of this ordinance is declared or adjudged to be invalid or unconstitutional, such declaration or adjudication shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance as if such invalid or unconstitutional provision was not originally a part of this ordinance. Section five, city code provision revised. The provisions of section two shall be inserted in as new section two dash one two three of the city code with existing language deleted. Section six, publication, this ordinance being general or permanent in nature, the city clerk shall cause the same purpose as required by law. Section seven, effective date, this ordinance is exempt from the thirty-first day after its passage or the date of its publication, whichever is later.
I suppose we need to send this to the administration committee. Has it been to committee yet?
Point of interest, point of interest, ma'am. Point of interest. I'm receiving this in the pack on Thursday. What is written in the original one? It was something different and I feel that it should start all over again because if you're going to change something that we originally got, then it has to go through an amendment from the floor and it didn't go through an amendment. We originally see, read one thing and then you change it to something else a day or so later. I really think that it should have been, should have been amended.
Why don't we let the city attorney address that or the, uh, city clerk's office? I think there was a mix-up.
But at, at previous reading, it was not in, it was not in the original ordinance.
Would you all like to address that?
This was, uh, actually always intended to be the original document. The one you have that was delivered to was a preliminary draft that was delivered to the clerk's office and then the, this particular document was delivered to clerk's office and through a miscommunication was not substituted in for the one that you have. Of course, as you recall, Thursday, when we discovered the mistake, we sent out revised copies to everybody and to the press to, to advise everyone that this is actually the document to be, to be used. It is up only for the It is up only for the first reading tonight, so that's, that's basically what happened. It was just simply an error, a mistake that we made, and this, this one that has the 12 miles is actually the one that was always intended by the sponsor to be included in the package.
However, I do think it should start over, but I will, I will accept that that's where you want to put that, but I want to speak to this ordinance even though it has to go to a committee. We have a chance in here, we're getting ready to vote on something this week, or in two weeks, or in, in a month. And we can make a good decision for Pine Bluff, or we can make a bad decision for Pine Bluff. If we make a good decision, it'll prove good for Pine Bluff. If we make a bad decision, it's going to prove more disaster for Pine Bluff. Right now, across the nation, Pine Bluff is listed as the number one poverty city in America. It also is listed as the number one city that's losing population in America. I dare think anybody would enact a rule, or law, or an ordinance that says, you, you don't mind losing a million dollars a year as the financial debt, and population to one, two, or to 100, it doesn't matter, any person is lost in a town already that's declining in population, there's something wrong with it. If you, as an elected official, and those people that are, that, some, some people that actually agree said, it doesn't matter to them, but if you love Pine Bluff, you want to keep everybody in Pine Bluff, you want to keep your tax base in Pine Bluff, and you want to continue to move forward and, and grow Pine Bluff, you don't make, you don't enact laws.
Sir?
That says, excuse me.
You're out of order.
You don't enact laws that says that, excuse me, excuse me.
No, no, sir, you're out of order because it's not time for discussion, it's not open for discussion.
Ah, excuse me, but anytime I get the floor, I wouldn't do this now.
No, sir.
Anytime I get the floor, and I have it, you gave me the floor.
No, sir, you made a comment about the, the item being on the agenda.
Thank you very much, mayor.
But this is not a time for discussion or question, so we're going to move on. Thank you.
I stand corrected, thank you.
It'll go to the administration committee and be put on the agenda for the next meeting, please.
And the administration committee will be here Thursday, May 16, at 2:00 p.m., in the mayor's conference room.
Thursday, the 16th?
Thursday, the 16th. Why don't we just schedule that meeting here, in this, in this room here? On the 16th, yeah, yeah. Upstairs, okay, okay. Okay, at 2:00 p.m. Okay. Thursday, at 2:00 p.m., is that a good time? Okay, okay, just call me, call me if, if something changes. But right now, it would be Thursday, the 16th, May 16, at 2:00 p.m., upstairs in the mayor's conference room.
Okay, we have an ordinance defining fixed assets of the municipality directing that all city agencies and departments create and maintain a list of fixed assets and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas Arkansas Code annotated section 1459107 requires that the governing body of a municipality adopt a policy defining fixed assets and maintaining a list of the fixed assets so defined, owned by the municipality, and whereas it is the desire of the city to comply with the code provision. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1. A fixed asset of the municipality includes the following: land, buildings, improvements to buildings or property, infrastructure, motor vehicles, equipment, heavy machinery, any property purchased or leased with a value of $2,500 or more, which has a useful life of one year or more. Section 2. The mayor shall be responsible for ensuring that each city department and agency creates and maintains a current list of fixed assets with the possession or control of the department, within the, within the possession or control of the department. A list shall be organized by category, the same being A through H in section 1 above, and in the applicable category contain a minimum of the following information: A, property item number, if available, real estate should include the Jefferson County parcel number if known; B, a description of the property sufficient to identify it; C, a serial number; D, date of acquisition and name of the, of the vendor; E, cost of the property, of property and estimated useful life; F, for fixed assets leased with a purchase option, the monthly payment and down payment and the, and the interest rate. Section 3. It shall be the responsibility of each department or agency, or agency head to ensure that the fixed asset list for the department or agency is maintained current. It shall be the duty of the mayor to monitor the compliance of each department of the agency head for adherence to this requirement.
This was already reviewed with Ways and Means Committee with a recommendation for due pass, so we'll place it on the calendar for the next meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Will a copy of this be in the city clerk's office?
It's in the finance department, it's where it normally is kept, but. Those assets you mean? This is a. Sure, I'm sure it can, I would imagine they would have to have a copy there. It's for the requirements of the legislative audit when they do our annual audit, they want us to, this is something they've said we had to put in place.
And we've had it in place, it's just that, yeah, and Gina Devers is the one that is over that.
I think it's good legislation because there are some things that I know, you know, that we haven't had, it's completely.
This will be valuable to the city as time goes along. Okay.
This will be a good list to do inventories, inventory control as well.
Okay, we'll move on to number 7, an ordinance appointing the members of the Expanded Parks and Recreation Commission, admitting ordinance number 6433, to adjust the terms of initial appointments to the commission and permitting the department of a commissioner to a full term after completion of the term of the initial appointment, up for the first reading.
Whereas on April 1, 2013, the City Council passed ordinance number 6433, which provides for an extended, expanded Parks and Recreation Commission consisting of nine members, and whereas state law requires that a newly expanded commission be configured to provide staggered terms of service for initial appointments, with subsequent appointments being for five-year terms as reflected in ordinance number 6433, and whereas it is desired that the individuals heretofore serving continue to serve the duration of the term of their appointment, and whereas it is desired that all initial appointees be eligible for reappointment when their initial term expires. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1. The mayor's appointments of the following persons to the Parks and Recreation Commission to the number position noted and for the term indicated are hereby approved and confirmed. Position 1, Cami Hunt, to expire May 31, 2014. Rand.
Brandon.
Brandon, Brandon Henry, to expire May 31, 2013. Roy Tolson, to expire May 31, 2014. Jeffrey Pulliam, to expire May 31, 2015. Fabian.
Fontenot.
Fontenot, okay. To expire May 31, 2016. Duke Fakuri.
Fakuri.
Fakuri, to expire May 31, 2016. Jonathan Frazier, to expire May 31, 2016. Christopher Blunt, to, term to expire May 31, 2017, and Carson Fields, term to expire 2000, May 2017. For each position, the term shall commence June 1, 2013. Section 2. Section 2 of ordinance number 6433 is amended to provide that the initial appointments to the positions 1 through 3 on the commission shall be for one year. The initial appointment for positions 4 shall be, for position 4 shall be for two years, that the initial appointments to position 5 through 7 shall be for three years, and that the initial appointments to positions 8 through 9 shall be for four years. This permits all individuals currently serving as commissioners to complete the term of service of their previous appointment. Section 3, notwithstanding the provisions of section 2-181A or C, each of the individuals named in section 1 shall be eligible for reappointment to a full term when their initial term is, of appointment is completed, and to serve out the entire term of the appointed, appointment if desired. Section 4. It shall be the duty of each commissioner to attend the meetings of the commission and otherwise carry out the responsibilities of the position as described by ordinance or state law. Failure to regularly attend the commission's meetings or to carry out the responsibilities of the position of the commissioner constitutes cause for removal, and the city council may, by majority vote, remove a commissioner for cause. Section 5, all ordinances, resolutions, or other parts, or any parts thereof hereby repealed, are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 6. The provisions of this ordinance are, are declared to be severable, should any part, portion, or provision be found invalid, the remaining parts, portions, and provisions shall be given effect with the invalid provision excised. Section 7. This ordinance being of general or permanent nature, the clerk shall publish it as required by law, it should take effect on the 31st day after its passage or the date of its publication, whichever is later.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance on second reading.
Point of information, point of information.
Second?
Second.
Point of information.
Okay. Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance, and, and usually, we don't put names on ordinances, we put positions and numbers. And also usually, when we make appointments to commissions, they're informed a resolution and it's individually done with an ordinance, I mean, with the resolution, they're not on ordinance, we're not, these, these names, this ordinance is going to be in the book, and those names are going to change, so it should be positions versus names. Excuse me, it should be position versus name, names should not be on here. I can go along with the positions, but the names should not be on the ordinance. And we always do names in resolutions and not on the ordinance itself. Names are appointed to commissions through resolutions, not ordinances.
I think in the spirit of how this came about and changing it all, and all the appointments, renaming the nine appointments, if I'm correct, Joe, is that the reason why we changed it to an ordinance rather than a resolution? Because this was discussed?
Well, as you recall, I believe it was a meeting before last when the ordinance 6433 was passed, when it was under consideration, it originally provided for 11 positions, and then there was an amendment on the floor to reduce it to nine, which carried, and there was some language in the rest of the ordinance which talked about filling 11 staggered positions, which was not amended out of the ordinance, so to correct that, which is addressed in this ordinance, was necessary to take into account that we'd have to stagger terms for just nine rather than 11. When we have created, for example, when this commission was created initially in 1970 and then again in 76 when it's reauthorized, that was done by ordinance, and the original initial appointees were named in the ordinance. You're absolutely correct that we usually do it by resolution, but since this was a kind of a restart of this body, and it was, it was going to be necessary to amend the previous ordinance to address the problem with the correction of the number of terms, it was just felt that putting everybody into one piece of legislation and start from there would be the best way to go. Hereafter, when we come up for appointments, it'll all be by resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
I really did not, I did attempt to call your office today, but I did not come with the idea that we would vote on this tonight, because there is some question about some of the appointees. One says the residence is White Hall, Arkansas, and the other one doesn't give a residency at all. So I think, you know, I think it would be in the best interest and serves well if we just read it one time, and, and rather than voting a certain way, and maybe voting somebody out.
Which one is in White Hall? The only one I can think of is Fabian Fontenot, and he lives in Pine Bluff. It's not? Okay.
And then there's another one that just says Pine Bluff, but no street address.
He lives in the city limit. Yes, sir.
I also believe that they should be voting as a resolution per name, that's a normal procedure, and, and actually, in this ordinance, this should be just positions only where those expired terms are, not the people. It should be positions, because later that's what it's going to be, after two, after May 31, 2014, it's going to be somebody else in that position, and this ordinance says their name, it should just be the position will expire 2014, May 31. I just think Ms. Walker may have made a good motion that we don't suspend the rules and make an emergency tonight, I think it needs some correction, we read it and send it to a committee, or whatever we need to do, but there's some correction that needs to take place on this ordinance.
I see. Second, that motion.
There's two that just live there, just in Pine Bluff, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and one of them is White Hall.
Okay. The one that you're speaking about.